Meeting of November ninth to order, will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Hiddardale. Commissioner Rush. Commissioner Murashi.
Here.
Vice Chair Schaefer.
Here.
Chair Christie.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen. Chair, you have quorum.
Uh, is he excused?
Which?
Commissioner Nguyen.
Yes, he did inform staff he will not be in attendance. Commissioner Rush and Commissioner Garcia did confirm their attendance, so they should be here shortly.
Okay, they should be here. Nguyen, Commissioner Nguyen was out of the country, and I think he's coming into LAX now. So that's why he's not here, okay? Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? By Commissioner Schaefer, please.
If you don't, lift your hand up in your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, would you show that Commissioner Garcia and Commissioner Rush has now come in, and here comes Vince. Hey Vince. Okay. Okay, this is the public comment section. This is for anyone in the public that would like to speak to the Commission on non-agendized items, okay? Ones that are not agendized on the calendar here on this agenda. So do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak on non-agendized items? And if not, good. Okay, here we go. Consent calendar. Okay. At this time, I'd like consent items number, number, item number A for the excused absence of Commissioner Nguyen. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Schaefer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Murashi. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and it's seven, seven? Two, four, six, seven, seven with Commissioner Nguyen absent. Okay. Next on that is the recommended for the minutes. Okay. Do we have any additions or questions?
There were no minutes presented today. Rosa is still working on them, so they'll be at the next meeting.
Okay. Moving right along, okay. Commissioner Disclosure. Okay, does any Commissioner have any disclosures at this time?
I would like to disclose, this morning I went and visited the home in question today. Met the owner, Ann, and we discussed the house.
Okay. Anyone else? I spoke on Saturday to Mr. Johnson on Saturday with regards to the house and so forth. So that's my disclosure. Next order of business is our business calendar. Okay. And this is time for our public hearing. Okay. This is the time and place for the public hearing on item number one for the Historic Resource Commission application number 2017-29 and Historic Register Categorization 2017-28 and Historic Property Preservation Agreement 2017-33. Okay, staff? Hi Ricardo.
Hello, how are you? Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the Commission. Up for discussion before you is an application to consider listing the property at 927 West 20th Street onto the Santa Ana Register of Historical Properties, and to recommend that the city enter into a Mills Act agreement with the property owner. Just as a refresher, I'm gonna go over a little bit of the contributive category, which the item tonight is going to be recommended it be categorized as. Contributive category are for buildings and structures or objects or sites that contribute to the overall character and history of a neighborhood or district, and is a good example of period architecture. The site that we are looking at tonight is constructed in 1956, which qualifies it for the the age limit for homes. It's in, constructed in a ranch style, and is proposed to be listed as a contributive property. It's located at the north side of 20th Street, and it qualifies for listing on the register under Criterion One for its representation of the distinguishing characteristics of the ranch style. And in addition to being representative of the ranch style, it is a little unique in that unlike typical ranch styles that are really horizontal and low profile, this building is one story and a half in height. As you can see there at the center, a little obscured by the tree there, but it's unique for ranch style homes. Based on the analysis provided to the Commission in the report, staff recommends approval of listing of the property in the contributive category and approval that the city enter into a Mills Act agreement with the property owner. That concludes staff's presentation. I can answer any questions regarding the property.
Anyone?
I have one question. I noticed that there was like a room above the garage. Was that always there or not, or what? What's the story on that?
Based on building records, it looks like all of the construction is original. Sorry about that, corrected.
Says it was added in January of 63.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. The tree. On that, the low hanging branches is obscuring the view of Mr. Johnson. That needs to be cleared. Okay, because of the fact that you're not seeing the structure from the street level. And one of the things that we have to do is not to have an unobstructed view. So on, on that portion there that you have, just the low hanging, is that something that you would consider in doing?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, looks to be a city tree, right? Because it's in the parkway?
There are two trees. One is a city tree, and there's another on the private property side.
Okay, is this one, this is your tree, right?
So there are two trees. The tree in the foreground is, in the, in the parkway is the, is the city tree. And then there's a second tree, which is a sycamore closer to the house. And I believe that that is probably the branches that are obscuring the view in this picture right now. So yeah, we would, whereas the city tree, where you see the, the vertical, or the, the V to the left?
Mm-hmm.
The first V, that was probably the lowest of the city tree branches that come off of the, that come off of the main tree.
Right. But the other one-
And then so then the, the, what is obscuring the view in this particular picture would be the, the, the low hanging branches on our tree, the sycamore tree. That's in our, that's in our yard.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And so we would definitely be able to take down, to, not take the, I don't want to take the tree down, but we'd definitely be able to trim the, the low hanging branches to where similar to on the right side, as we're looking at the house, you have the, the small peak next to the driveway. There's a similar small peak to the, that's obscured as you're looking at this picture to the left. So that we, so we'd be able to definitely trim the branches to where those architectural features would be, definitely be able to be seen from the street.
And Melanie McCann, could you, on the city tree, kind of, you know, look at that tree to see if you can be some attention to that also?
As with the one last time.
Last time and also. Now, in addition, that the house is being painted for, for city staff. You know, they're, they're doing painting. And Mr. Johnson, I don't know if he's contacted you yet, wanted to know, you wanted to paint it white?
So actually, I think your question, which I already spoke to Ricardo before the meeting, was with regarding to painting the, the entryway, the brick. So you can't really tell, but there's the, the entryway that is in the shadows right now is a brick, brick wall feature on each side of the, the door, as well as underneath the windows. And so our, our main question I asked to you, Commissioner Christie, was whether we could paint that white, the brick white, in which Ricardo has indicated that he didn't, did not feel that that would be appropriate to do in keeping with the, with the features, architectural features of the house.
Okay, because-
So we will not do that.
Yeah, because he asked me, and I said, I refer you to staff, you know, as far as any colors whatsoever, okay?
Yeah, so we're currently painting the house right now, and it's a very similar, similar color that is in this photograph.
Right. So after this, you know, the, the painting of the house and the trees, can we please get another picture to go in for, for, for that, to get the true reflection of, of that particular home, okay?
Sure, we'll do that.
Okay? All right. Don't go away.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, all right. Now, this is the time, remember I told you, you're gonna be up here telling us, you know, how did, you know, if you bought the home, what enticed you to this particular area?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. First, first of all, I'd like to, to give thanks to Melanie, because she was very helpful in, in this process. And so I do want to give, give thanks to Melanie, and she was very helpful in going through, I would, and I'm a professional, going through a complicated process. So thank you, Melanie, for, for your assistance with the applications. So we purchased our house approximately 13 years ago. I believe that we are the fourth owners of the home, with the, the initial owner being the longest, longest owner, the Swansons. He, and it's a Roy Russell home, if you're familiar with West Laurel Park. He was a very prominent builder in our community with, and I feel our house is a very, a very good depiction of, of his style of homes. And a, and a, and a very distinctive home, not only on our street, but also in the neighborhood in itself, in that it is a higher, higher roof line, and the windows are, are, are period, are period good representations of the, of the style of windows at the, at the time. And it's just, I feel it's a very unique, unique home. When you turn the corner, I feel like it sticks out from a, from a positive perspective. And I do think it brings a lot of character to, to our street on 20th Street. We're the second house in, and so I feel like it gives a good representation of, of a 1950s ranch style home. We're very proud of our home. We have three kids that enjoy living in it, of which is why my wife is not here right now, because she is, she, you know, had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Murashi this morning, but she's taking care of the kids on their after-school activities. But we're, we're very pleased to, to be considered for, for this honor. I don't believe that there's many houses on our street, if any, on our street that have been designated. So we take a lot of pride in, in, in this honor. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you so much. Okay. Excuse me. Madam Secretary, do, have we received any written communications?
We have not.
Okay. I now am opening the public hearing, the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this particular application for historic resource, now is the time for you to speak. Do we have anyone in the audience? You've already spoken, you're the applicant. Mr. Johnson, anyone? If not on the subject, thank you so much for sharing, Mr. Johnson, that information. I'm going to bring this back to the Commission for any questions of those, of the Commission. Commissioner Schaefer?
Of course, I always have comments, but.
Did you sell them for this house?
Well, I have sold this house a couple of times. I sold it when the Swansons owned it back in 91, and they were the original owners. But it is a significant house. Tim has write, or Mr. Johnson's, right? About his house, and it really does stand out. It's sort of a precursor to homes that Roy Russell built later in his career, more in the like 1960-ish time that are on Olive Street, that are a story and a half, so there are some sort of around the corner that are not as charming as this house is. This has a particular style and charm to it. And I, I do agree with staff that I think the brick is sort of one of the character defining features of the house, so it's, it really has a nice presence because of that. Just a bit of history, there were actually several more trees in the front of the house when the Swansons lived there. And that's another reason the house really stood out back in the day, because it had more trees than anybody else on the block, I believe. But has always been one of those homes that's well taken care of, loved, well maintained, and really does stand out. So I'm thrilled to see that it's, it's going on the registry.
Anyone else? No? Is there a motion, please? Commissioner Schaefer?
I'll make the motion. Let me get to the right page here. So I can say this correctly. I would like to move that we adopt a resolution approving the Historic Resources Commission Application Number 2017-29, and approving Historic Register Categorization Number 2017-28, and that we also recommend to the clerk and the city council that we execute a Mills Act agreement, or Historic Preservation Agreement, on this property as noted 2017-33, with no, no big changes.
And you did say city manager, right?
Yes. City manager and city council, yeah, and clerk, yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Schaefer, second by Commissioner Murashi. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions, no? Okay. I'm sorry, let me back up one second, okay? The public hearing is closed, thank you. My eyes went down. Now we can have the vote, okay? Moved by Commissioner Schaefer, second by Commissioner Murashi. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed or abstaining? Okay. Okay, motion is approved, seven to one with the absence of Commissioner Nguyen. Congratulations. Okay, now we're going to move to the work-study calendar. We will now, please note that there will be no motions or action taken on, on these items. The first item on the work-study calendar is the Historic Resource Resources Evaluation Overview and Practices.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This afternoon, we would like to take an opportunity to give you a quick summary of kind of some of the items we begin to study as we retool our Mills Act program. I know Commissioner Rush mentioned staff working towards having some more teeth on the historic program. And so Melanie, I'd like to present an overview, as well as a few of the, of the cases that we've experienced over the review of the last series of applications that we needed some clarification on. So here's Melanie, thanks.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners, nice to see you. So, let's go back to the beginning. So, as Bernie mentioned, we wanted to take the opportunity to walk through the evaluation process that staff goes through, and actually more recently that our historic consultant has been taking the, the lead on. So just to kind of go over the basics, we know that Chapter 30 is where all the, the information is and the authority is for the Historic Commission. And it identifies the process for putting historic properties on the register. The one that's highlighted in blue that we'll talk about tonight is the Criteria for Selection. It also talks about Commission's role in modifications to historic properties to help it maintain, they make sure they're maintaining their integrity. Also, in Chapter 30, it talks about local historic districts and the demolition of historic properties. As I mentioned, tonight we wanted to talk about the Criteria for Selection. So this is the basics. So in the code, it talks about that a building, structure, object, or site needs to be 50 years or more, and and the architecture as well needs to reflect, be in place for 50 years or more, and one or more of the following. So there's a few items to touch on. And the first one that you see and folks identify with the most, I think, is that it could have distinguishing characteristics of an architectural style or period. And that's part of what, in this later batch that we've seen, there's a lot of wonderful houses out there, but the distinguishing characteristics of some of the houses are not quite as strong as we've seen in the past. So that's where, as we continue to go through the 30-some, we want to make sure we all are, you know, kind of on the same pace.
Can we ask questions or make comments as we go through?
It's Council, the Commission's pleasure.
I have a question about the architectural style or period. Like the house we just did says ranch, but there's a lot of variants of ranch-style housing, and we had done one earlier a few months ago on River Lane. It was really more of an English Tudor type, and we called it a ranch. So particularly on the ranch category, I'd like to maybe have us have some kind of a sub, it's, it's a ranch, but it's a, you know, this kind of ranch or something like that. I think it'd be beneficial, since we're putting them on the Historic Registry, to just be as accurate with that as possible.
We would-
And since it's our number one thing on your criteria.
Absolutely. And just a quick question, we do have what, and we'll talk about it a little bit later, the Santa Ana Style Guide. So we have a list of architectural styles and variants, subcategories, so we can certainly look into adding that for the ranch style and having that as a resource for us. So I'm going on to the second point. The other criteria would be that the structure is a work of a notable architect, builder, designer, et cetera, that has some strong influence in architectural development. The third one is that it's a rare building, structure, or original design. And then the other category is that the places where something really special went on. So it's where important events occurred, famous people, early settlers, unique businesses, and served as an important political, social, cultural activity center. So that's, that's, kind of catches a lot of, of different subsections. Then the other two is that the site has an archaeological, is of archaeological importance. And the last one is that it's connected with a business or use, which was once common, but is now rare. So that could be a redline structure, that could be a farmhouse, things that were once common in our culture, common in our, our life in the early days, and is not so much now.
Melanie?
Yes ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Archaeological importance, the site. Expand on this just a little bit more.
This one is more a visual of something that was once common. So the, this had to do with the redline back in the old day, which, I don't know, full circle, fixed guideway is on its way. But this is from a, this is from an era that you don't, we don't have the redline anymore, and that mode of transportation for quite some time was, didn't exist. But it was very active in, earlier in time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So as, so that first criteria that is used most often is that it has distinguished an architectural style. So the first thing that we do is we look at our, our style guide and some other references, and we identify the different architectural styles. So these are just some quick visuals, and they're a little bit hard to read, but the scale. But the upper left is Spanish Mission Revival, and the middle upper is Colonial Revival, upper right, English Revival. You can't see the bottom, so, sorry about that.
Tudor?
Bungalow, Colonial Revival.
Colonial Revival.
You have it on your handouts. Yeah.
Melanie, that house on the bottom in the middle, that happens to be the Keach Glad House, I don't think that's Colonial Revival.
It said that it's Colonial Revival with classical influences. So that's where sort of the subcategory is. Because that's Debbie McEwen's house.
Yeah, that's a Taliant.
Yeah.
Maybe they consider that a variant, but I, I don't think you'd call it Colonial Revival. Anyway.
We looked, well, and that's where we get to the description and being as on target with how we describe it. But we actually pulled a template for that today, and it said Colonial Revival, and it had some extra words with it as far as classical influences and such. So we just went for the short description. But be happy to follow up with you on that, Commissioner Rush. So we, we obviously identify the architectural style, and then for these structures that we're looking at, we identify the character-defining features that correspond with that architectural style. So that includes exterior materials, the roof, how it's structured, the detailing, windows, doors, chimneys, porches, balconies, bays, accessory structures like garages, and a variety of detailing. So as you know, that for instance would be on the bottom left there for the bungalow craftsman, it would be that we would be looking for low-pitched roof, we'd be looking for hung windows and tripartite windows. We'd be looking for the, you know, the porch features. We'd be looking for the wood, wood siding and complimentary, either stone or sometimes stucco on the porch columns, you know. Those are the character-defining features. That if those don't exist in the structure we're looking at, then there's something that's not quite eligible, it's not quite there. Now, and going back to the other criteria, if there's someone really exceptional that lived there, then that's where in the past there's been some compromise on that, because the house has such significant history that even though the architecture is a little bit not up to par, then we're, and that's where we want to work to restore it, but, and it's been placed on the list. But generally, if the architectural defining features are not there, then it would be recommended for not placement. So the other basic step we go through is we do the building research, and we had to, you know, identify the year built. And two key things that we want to touch on today, because they're factors in why there's, there were three locations that were deemed as not eligible, and it's for these couple of points. If there's been exterior modifications that are made that compromise the integrity of that structure and the architectural style, then we would not recommend eligibility. And once again, when we're placing it on the list, what we're looking at is the primary elevation, what's visible from the street. So, so it'd be based on that. Now, having said that, since most of our structures are coming to be listed and piggybacked with Mills Act, we end up getting on the property and looking full circle everywhere else. And that's where, if there's some things around, not, so say the street elevation is clean, immaculate, and pristine, and has its integrity. If we go on the site and there's additional things around that are not appropriate, then that's the opportunity for us to, particularly with the new Mills Act conversation and new practices, to potentially look for how that might be part of the agreement of the Mills Act to, in a certain amount of time, go back and restore some other things on, in the house. So that's kind of key that we wanted to put that out there to be starting to think about. And then the last point is our ongoing practice has been that if there's exterior modifications that through our research and we determine that we're done with out permits, once again, visible from the street, then they're not eligible until those things are remedied. So we'll just, I'm not sure how, oh, yes.
Do we have properties that, that are, aren't the exterior modification without the building permits? Do we have many of those applications coming through which would deem them not eligible?
We have bumped into a couple, and and we have worked with them to remedy it, so that then they submit their application. We've had it both ways, where we have an application now where, you know, they've done the stucco work, so that, well, that one, the one I was going to speak to is that they've done exterior modifications that affected the stucco, that it's not period. It was the wrong kind of stucco. So they're going to go ahead and change that before they can come in and be processed to be eligible. On the other hand, we have bumped into a couple situations where there's an unusual add-on in the back or something, and then that's where we will talk to the customer. I think, if you think of one in particular, that they enclosed a back open patio area, and we said, "That doesn't look right, and there's no permits." And then they, they had just bought the house, and so they realized the situation, and they've remedied that. So it has come up.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm not sure how much time we have tonight. I have two examples we can go through, or I'm not sure how much time we have this evening.
Yeah.
Okay. So once again, just to reiterate about that integrity part of things. So we talked about this, our city's Chapter Thirty criteria of what you need to be, what criteria you need to meet. In addition, the National Register has established overall guidance to determine what's historically significant. And they are emphasizing not only the criteria, but maintaining the integrity of it. So the seven words, if you will, that are associated with maintaining integrity are the location of the structure, the design of the structure, the setting, so it's kind of the context, the materials, that they're true to that period, that timeframe, the workmanship, that it's quality workmanship. And we have the, the feeling, you know, the sort of, that kind of touches on the setting, the ambiance, that the, that historic ambiance is there, and its association with the, the community and the neighborhood, et cetera. So just wanted to touch on that, too. As we, as particularly as you're looking at historic modifications in the future, once again, the integrity, those are the kind of the qualities of integrity that you're wanting to make sure those modifications maintain. So here's one of our examples. And this house is on North Greenleaf. It's one of the three that was deemed not eligible by our consultant. And I'm going to go to the next slide to touch on the points, and then we can come back to the, to the picture again. So this was deemed to be an English Revival. The alterations that were felt to compromise the integrity of the structure were number one. The door that you see in the bottom right, the opening appeared to be modified, the arch in the opening to allow for that modern door. And so that would require a little bit more of working with the applicant to remedy that, number one. Put in an appropriate door that's period versus the modern, you know, contemporary one. And then also take a look at that arch and how it may have affected the frame. So that's one thing. The other thing is upper right, it might be a little hard to see, but their chimney, you can see the reveal there, that there's, there appears that there were clinker bricks there. And those are typically exposed. So what we would want to do is work with the resident and do some reconnaissance and see what was the original there. And if it was exposed, they should, it should be restored back to how it was. Because that's a character-defining feature of the, of the architecture. And then the other thing, I'll go back to the prior picture, is the contemporary flower boxes and stonework that was added around the base of the feature window and the perimeter of the site. So once again, those other words about the setting, the ambiance, the, you know, the context. So once again, our historic consultant was emphasizing that. So under the feature window on the right, you can see there's some stonework there at the base. It's hard to see it in detail, but that type of stone would not have been complementary in period to the, the time of being built. So as you can see, we're kind of getting in an area that's a little bit different, but, but that's the comment here, that, and that's one of those features that we'd probably want to talk through a little bit more, and, and then see in what situation should that be remedied.
Also, many, I'm familiar with a lot of these style homes that are in Washington Square and Floral Park, Park San Diego. A lot of the English Tudor-style homes like this that had that center indentation where the entry and the dining room window typically are, had a little low courtyard wall originally, and in some cases, those have been removed. I don't know about this particular property, if that was the case or not. But many of them had a little low, my grandmother had one of these homes in Washington Square. And I always thought that was a charming feature. It was, oh, there's a little front patio there, that that was original. I don't know about this case. I know all that stonework was added over the years. I've seen them do that in the last few years.
So this is an interesting one to, to just, you know, look on, think on, that, that while it's a lovely house, the quality workmanship, et cetera, from a historic perspective, it does not have all the features. There's just enough changes that it doesn't maintain the integrity of being listed on the local register. So this is one where we could work with a resident, and they could help to reverse those things. But that would be one example. So the second example is over here on Heliotrope. And we could have put in a before and an after. This is one where they've, I'll, once again, I'll go back and forth a little bit. So it's an English Revival again. And the windows, the fenestration's been altered to accommodate modern vinyl windows at one point. I haven't been out to the site to look at it close up. We know by looking at some historical pictures just from a few years back, there at one point, the front-left window was a slider, vinyl slider of some sort. And, and they obviously made an attempt to, to bring it back. But there's some unclarity on if they actually enlarged the windows. And so there's just some different modifications. And once again, we're talking about the primary elevation, that, that it felt that, that it was not appropriate. Then also, I'll go back to the picture in just a second. The contemporary front door, the roof has some incompatible materials that we'll touch on. And then the siding was clad to smooth stucco in the recent past. So let's go back to the picture. So when we talk about the roofing, it has a bit to do with the, you have that attic feature that's popped up there. Once again, this is supposed to emulate and be like, whoa, this is a certain style. And there's just been enough modifications from these different things that it just isn't a distinguished example.
The desert landscaping is also reminiscent of the English Revival style.
That's, I'm glad you brought-
I think of that always when I think of English Revival.
There you have it. So for each of these property owners, we, we have called them. We've talked to them about the, the different issues. But, so that's, that's another example.
Another question about this particular house, that attic top window up there. I'm wondering if that was original or added. There is, there is a second floor in this house, but it is very, very low ceilings. And I don't know if that was permitted or original or-
I'd have to go back and look at the records, but I, my, if my recollection is correct, it was permitted. But-
That window might have been added at that point.
Yeah. And even in some prior history ones, there were, the window was a li, little different looking. We, you know, going back on Google Maps, you can only go back so far. But it's my recollection that it was done with permits. But the addition, if we, if they came to us today, we probably wouldn't have encouraged that addition in that way, in that style and such. So that, that sort of walks us through those two examples. And we'd be happy to talk through any questions and continue the conversation.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I have the unique perspective of being on both sides of the fence. In other words, I was a homeowner who was interested in buying a historical home in, in San Ana. And what happened was, every time I found a home that I thought, this is a good home for me, I'd call up Holly, and I'd say, "Holly, what about this? Would this qualify?" And she'd look it over, and she'd give me some honest assessments. And there was one point where the housing market was just going crazy. And I was lucky to finally get a house, because they were just flying off the shelf and, and outbidding and all that sort of stuff. So I finally just jumped and bought the house. So then I asked Holly, "What about this house?" And she said, "No, it does not qualify." And so I was like, "Oh, my God." And she pointed out why. Because they, previous owners had, in the seventies, texture-coated the whole house, and all that was peeling off. And the windows, some were, were rotted away and everything else. And then they put balls on the courtyard to make it look New Orleans-style, like the house next door. And so she was nice enough to point out all those things. And so I said, "Well, you're right. That's all true. And I still, I would love to go all the way back." So I spent well over a hundred thousand dollars on that house to put it back the way it originally was by using original photographs from the previous owners and stuff like that. So, and so now, I remember when it came up for vote, Phil's, he, all the comments you made about it was just, made me feel really good that I'd done the right things.
He did a good job. It was a wrap.
Right. It was. And so now that I'm a, a commissioner, I keep those things in mind. You know, this isn't, I don't view this as a free giveaway. Hey, anybody that wants a tax break, we're going to give them automatically, you know, accept their house and stuff. We got to have some integrity. So I really did appreciate Holly, number one. She would really filter out what we saw. So when something came in front of us, we pretty much felt comfortable buying into it. We may have a few questions, but overall, we, we've really felt good. So I appreciate you guys being discriminative and, and going back to the owners and doing that. And that's perfect. And telling them what needs to be changed, if something needs to be changed, or if it can even be made back to the original and be qualified. So, yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Are there, are there certain parameters of this that maybe exist in, in other communities that you think should be changed, altered, added? Maybe what does Pasadena, or maybe the city of Orange, or, you know, last Sunday, I was at the Old Town Preservation Association Home Tour. I was working the booth for Preserve Orange County. And Friday night was our launch, and the mayor of Orange spoke. And boy, there's a lady who, she eats, sleeps, and drinks preservation, and of course, made my heart swell thinking, wouldn't that be lovely if we had that with our city council? But of course, I, I have a rich fantasy life. But anyway, with regard to this, are there certain things you'd like to see us consider for adoption?
Um, we have looked at a couple of other cities as we kind of rethink and refine our, our, a way we approach things. And to this point, I don't think we have any recommendations for changes. We're looking at others for how they go through, what their best practices are. And I think we mentioned, recently, we met with that consortium of local Orange County cities that share information. And so we, we plan to continue to talk to our neighbors in the Passadenas and look at their procedures. Because some, some cities have, here's our way we do it, and here's our evaluation form, and all that. So we're continuing to look at that. But short-term, I think the process is very similar to others. Everyone takes a little different spin and a little different tack. But we're open to continuing to improve and refine.
I think one of the things that, and of course, this is part of the bigger discussion. I hopefully will get an update tonight on where we're at in terms of the fees and so forth, which went back to the astronomical levels in whatever it was, September. And even though the city's budget largely was made whole by the adoption of the contract with another federal agency, why, I don't know that we've had any movement on what's going on with our specific issue, and that needs to be addressed. But as long as those fees are in the stratosphere, you're largely only going to see houses from Park San Diego and Floral Park and West Floral Park. That's it. There, there won't be anybody else that'll be applying because fees are so high. So I think that's unfortunate when, when great neighborhoods like Eastside and Henniger Park and Washington Square and Welshire Square suffer because of these absolutely exorbitant fees. And they're exorbitant by county standards when you compare it to our, the other cities in the county. I mean, nobody has fees anywhere close to ours.
One of the things that we anticipate as we're, as we come back to for discussion on the Mills Act and, and different procedures is, is to do a comparison of what other cities are doing. So that's one of the things that we plan to do, is, you know, what are the fee differences from our surrounding cities and those cities that are known to be historic? What are their practices? And so we definitely plan to come back with, be able to see that whole picture on where we stand with others.
Any other comments? I have to agree with Commissioner Marashi, is that when we place a home on the Historic Register or in the Mills Act, it has to be a privilege. It has to be historic, you know, on that. Homes that are coming up because in fact that fifty years, we're an older city, that will say, "Well, we had an important person, but there's no historic significance." No. Okay? You're part of a community, and what you do for that community is a good neighbor, not because you live there and you're not contributing to the historical significance of our city. So I thank you for going over all of this and coming in and bringing, you know, and saying, "This is our selection and how we're doing." And then if there are things that come up where there's a question or, that's what the commission's job is, you know, to look at everything. Okay? And staff, we know that you've been working extremely hard and the challenges that you have this year. I just want to thank you for, for doing that. And then bringing in the homes. And if we do see something where it's shrubbery or something, and, you know, even though it's historic and coming in, that you're going to follow up with them. So that when we have this document that comes in and putting together of why it was selected, that it is pristine, okay? Because of the fact that we had challenged with the, and the planning commission agrees with us, you know, that you've got to comply and make sure everyone can see that property because of the fact of it's historic, you know, it's on the Historic Register. So I just want to compliment all of you, even our attorney, that has put enough all of our resolutions here, for all the fine work that you have done and bringing it to, to the work study. And I know that as things come in with other, once again, we definitely want to look, you know, maybe we can get a copy of the fees of other cities and so forth, and, and present it to our council. Because remember, guys, I don't know with the new city manager, because the old one asked us to do a presentation for the, for the council, City Council. That might be our opportunity to do that. So we still, you know, we told them in January that we were going to get together and do that presentation and to let them know, and just to see, you know, the structure and, and the other homes that we have, that would, we would love to have on there. But because of this, it's, it's a prohibitive kind of fee. That's, that's not protecting that particular style because of the fact residents don't have the money. Okay? Don't, not. So let's, let's work toward that goal. Right? Anyone else?
Madam Chair, a comment. I believe I recently read, I don't know if anybody else did, that the city of Anaheim received recognition. I'm guessing state, I can get the details, for having the most properties on the Mills Act. And I believe, I'm not sure if I read correctly, but I think I read there is no charge. And the recognition seemed to indicate that there was some sort of, there, you know, it's a good thing to have a large number of buildings on the Mills Act. So I can look into that and get some more information.
They, uh-
They actually do have a charge. It's two hundred and fifty dollars. And the two hundred and fifty dollars goes towards the plaque to put on the house.
Oh, there you go. So that's some of the ideas that, you know, that we have. Anyone else?
Speaking of plaques, at the last meeting, I think we had some discussion about offering a template so that people who get placed on the register can access that template, maybe on the city's website. And they know where, they got some vendors where to go. They know what the, what it's supposed to look like, and maybe what, how they can alter it if they wish. But have we made any progress on that?
Sure. I'm prepared to provide you with a short update. Perhaps we can finish up this item to see if there are any other questions pertaining to this presentation tonight.
Are you going to bring this back to us with some recommendation?
Um, this, excuse me, we do have, well, we have to have comments from the public.
Oh.
Okay?
I do have a little anecdote I'd like to add, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
About the city of Anaheim. I believe our one-time city historian, Diane Marsh, she fled Anaheim because they were tearing down too many historical buildings. So when I read that- So, when I read that they were encouraging and wanting as many listings on the Mills Act as possible, I thought that was very interesting.
They're trying to make up for sins of the past.
Right. And I think one note for perspective for Anaheim is, if I remember correctly, they don't actually put them on the list. They have like a district. So, they really use the Mills Act as a tool to preserve their homes. Theirs is unique. Theirs is different. They're, they're in a historic district, and then they pull them in the Mills Act to kind of lock them in because they don't have a historic list in the same fashion that we do. But one other little kudo, yeah. And they, and I also got some kudos. They did a video on the Mills Act, which we'll look at and see if our folks can benefit from it as well.
Anaheim does have a terrific program. It's one of the cities I was able to sit down and talk to. The next one I'm looking forward to doing is Fullerton. Because the way Fullerton works is they have an outside group called the Fullerton Heritage Group that does a lot of the write-up and stuff like that, and then submits it to the city. And when I'm done doing a couple of these key cities, I'd love to come back and give a little presentation on each of them and how they deal with it. Because each one is very unique and different.
To respond to Commissioner Rush, I think as we get further, at, at this juncture, city staff is going to be taking a stronger role in doing these evaluations. We don't have the funds to have our historic consultant continue to help us. So, we're going to be probably refining the process along the way. And if we have some specific recommendations, we'll certainly come back.
Mia?
Thank you.
Now is the time for the public. If you would like to speak on this work study that we just have with our historic preservation, the criteria and everything that we just went through. If you would like to comment on that, we ask that you fill out a little form for speaking. Nope, nope. Okay, very good.
Seems like they're rushing to the front.
Okay, all right. Thank you once again, okay? Now, staff member, staff member comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A quick follow-up to an item by Commissioner Rush at our previous meeting related to the historic plaque program. To address the question on that, we have located the original files related to the program and are dusting off the program and working on creating a template for folks to utilize. So, when they are added to the, either register or enter into Mills Act agreement, we have provided them with an attachment that gives them not only the correct format, size, dimensions, and then, you know, we, we know you publishing, you published the producer of the plaques in your newsletter, but we hope to refine the plaque itself consistent with previous conversations. And then, we'd like to bring it back probably early January for your consideration to make sure we're on the right track with it. But we are moving forward with that and hope to do that in early part of next year. Let's see here. One other item I wanted to report back on was Commissioner Rush asked about how to add items to our agenda. I've asked city attorney Lisa Stork to report out on that item.
So, we looked at the bylaws, and the bylaws, they're going to actually have to come back to you for revision as far as your meeting date and the one section that applies to your question. Because it talks about taking a vote, having three of you have a consensus and taking a vote, which is not legal under the Brown Act. So, the intent of this section is that if three of you have a consensus, that there's an item that you'd like to have on a future agenda, you let staff know, and we'll put it on a future agenda for a discussion.
Wait a minute, you lost me. So, three members get together, talk to staff?
No, while you're here, like you bring up your staff comments. And Mr. Rush likes the plaque. So, if three members agree with Commissioner Rush and say, yes, that's a very good topic for discussion, we can't discuss it further because it's not agendized for the Brown Act. You put it on a future agenda.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right, and last item this afternoon, I'd like to introduce our newest member of comprehensive planning. Please stand. Pedro Gomez is a new assistant planner here with the city and will be assisting us with the historic preservation program and our general plan efforts. He comes us with, from the city of Yorba Linda.
Happy to be here. Thank you for having me.
Welcome. Let's give him a hand. We're the fun committee, okay? We're known as the fun committee. Everybody likes to come to our, our committee meetings, okay? And so forth, but welcome. We're glad to have you.
I have a couple of quick up, quick updates for you. Number one, a couple of projects you'll be seeing here in the near future. One is Tom's Trucks, the rate dairy building that's located right there on Fourth Street. The developer, the owner of the property, the Hydlers, the trust is looking to redevelop their entire site there. And their plan is right now is to convert that rate dairy building into a affordable housing project to meet the housing opportunity ordinance. They're still working through the details of that, but that plan will come back to you when they do some modification to that building. So, you'll see that probably sometime early next year. The other one, Hampton Inn, I think you may know, there's a proposal for Hampton Inn right there at the Five Freeway and Main Street. That project requires a relocation of a historic building off of Bush Street over to Main Street. That you'll see at probably your next meeting for the request, for the modification to move that house. So, you'll see those two projects there early next year.
Where's that house being relocated to?
It's relocated from Bush Street, it's 2046, I think, North Bush Street over to Main Street, right next to the McFarland Electric Building, which is, I believe, 2045 North Main. Somewhere around there, just right on the parking lot, you know where the parking lot is? Where the, they use for the Bowery Museum. It's going to be moved right just south of that. So, that building will be moved from Bush over to Main. It'll be used for a restaurant or some kind of eating facility for the Hampton Inn.
I thought they were using the old McFarland Electric, the house, the two-story house, which fronts on Main.
They'll both be used for eating establishments.
As a part of the Hampton Inn deal?
Yes, yes.
Huh, okay.
So, you have two historic buildings right there on Main, and then the New Hampton Inn will be just north of that.
Can I ask a question about that?
Absolutely.
I know in French Park, there's some vacant land, and they're looking for, and I don't know what style those houses, but I know that they, the Neighborhood Association was interested in moving some properties, which they've done historically in the past. And the city helped assist with that. I believe there's two or three lots, it might be on Bush, I'm trying to remember what street it's on, that are contiguous to each other, and they're just empty lots right now. On that same block, there were apartment buildings that were torn down because of code issues, et cetera. And there are some historic homes that were relocated there. You know, it'd be great to see that be on the staff's radar to sort of finish infilling that project. I think it'd bring a lot to, a lot of value to that neighborhood.
Sure, I'll look into that so we can come up with. So, we got those two projects coming up. We want to adjourn this meeting, January 4th, and so forth with the holidays. And we need a little time to get work, we have to work through the holidays like the little elves. But we're willing to do it, but we'd rather shift the meeting a couple of weeks. So, we're going to adjourn to January 18th, the 18th of January for the next scheduled meeting.
I have a question mark on that.
Thank you.
I really do.
And then, my last comment is, the year has flown by. It's our last meeting of the year. So, I just wanted to thank you all for the time and work you put in on this commission. And thank you for all the support you've given us, the staff. And happy holidays, and we'll see you next year. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other staff comments? That's all?
I have one question for Vince. Would we be reviewing the McFarland Electric Building? I hear they're going to rotate it 90 degrees on the lot?
No, that building is not being moved at all. It's been stayed in, in a state. It's not being rotated. I'll look into it if something.
I heard it was being moved by 90 degrees by a planning commissioner, but okay.
All right, moving on. Commissioner comments? Commissioner, here's a few down.
Well, I appreciate, with the song, I appreciate the presentation. And two items that I'd like to mention. First, I have been following up on trying to locate the Otto Jacobs' law practice archives. Apparently, it's, it's part of the Tulsaion, the county's archive. The county archives, according to us, would be very interesting getting it. And I think there's some other places it would be interesting. So, I think I may need to try to contact the Jacobs' family and see whether those materials even exist anymore. And if they do, whether the family would be willing to entrust them to the county or the historic society of some local or positive one. Secondly, I mentioned that I've been starting to look into another very eminent former resident of the city, a person who had a lot of information about him, the author Philip K. Dick. I don't know how many people are familiar with his work, in Chicago, 1928. Died at Western Medical Center in 1982. His last home, maybe the only home we own, was in Santa Ana on East Civic Center. I, he really has turned out to be someone whose stature's grown in the 35 years since his death. And he's written about 46 books, 121 short stories. I'm not very interested in science fiction, but from what I've been able to determine from the web and so on, he's regarded as a person of literary stature, who is kind of unique in that regard, very imaginative. One of the biographies of him is entitled, "Man Who Remained in the Future." And I'd like, I'd close by saying that there's a very prestigious series of books called, "The Library of America." Started publishing books in the 1980s, collecting classics by various American authors. The first three, I think, are Melville, Hawthorne, and Whitman. Philip Dick was the first science fiction author that they included. They came out of the volume of his in 2007, and two more volumes the last two years. So, out of 300 books that they've published so far, three of them are from this person who ended his career, his life here in Santa Ana. It's not a question of finding that information on him at all. His papers are archived, many of them, they got state footage and sold them up north where he lived for most of his life. But at some point, I'd like to try to think of some way we could commemorate his time here in the city. Because I'm expecting that over the next few decades and maybe over the next few centuries, he, his reputation will still stand up as a literary figure. Well, so, if anyone's interested in, in this meeting, this person, I would appreciate that if we talk about him in the future, I think. And with that, I'll say it's been a good year. I'm looking forward to next year. Wish everybody happy holidays. We're giving with Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Rush?
Thank you, and congratulations. I guess Mr. Johnson left. Our, our, our meeting was too overwhelming for him. Anyway, congratulations to that family for getting on the register. I have a couple of questions of staff, and that is, the Dr. Julius Crane House, which is also known as the Smith-Tuthill Mortuary. And most recently, it was San Ana Federal Savings, then Glendale Federal, Cal Fed, and then became Citibank or whatever, and now it's closed. Is that up? I know it had a for lease sign on it in front of it, and it's owned by some trust or something. But is it for sale or for lease, or what, what is, does anybody know what's going on with that?
We have no details on the funeral parlor. I'd be happy to follow up and try to gather as much information for you.
It's a beautiful building, and of course, it is a landmark in the city. And, of course, now it's being horribly impacted because of its unfortunate spot of being next door to the courtyard. But anyway, the other question I have is about the, what is the latest going on with the YMCA? My God, it's been under shroud for, what, the last two and a half years or so? I mean, what is going on? What's the timeline? Is it supposed to open in, in this century, or what's going on with it?
What I heard in the last week, need to confirm, is that St. Joseph's is no longer pursuant to the project.
Really?
The cost was just too high. So, my understanding, they're supposed to send us a letter any day now, now we received it, that's saying that they're no longer going to be involved in the project. So.
Well, snap my garter. Holy smokes.
I will double-check that and get back to you, but that's what I was told by some.
Because I was, I'd be understanding the city agreed to pay for all the remediation of the, you know, hazardous waste and la-dee-dah, right?
Which we've just about completed.
And after doing all that, now they don't want it?
Yeah, just doesn't pencil out.
Well, that's just fine with me. Hell, I'd rather see it become a hotel anyway. That's what we need downtown, a historic hotel. That would be fabulous. Okay, well, that's wonderful news. And again, I'm going to make the point that this project that's being proposed by Ryan O'Golnick at Edgewood in North Main, that is on the edge of a historic neighborhood with hundreds of fabulous homes. And this, this group ought to weigh in with a, with a proclamation or something to say, we're opposed to it. That's, that kind of density does not belong there. So, I'd like to enjoin two other commissioners to get it put on our agenda for consideration of a proclamation to, to come out against that project.
Can we, hold on one second, we're checking with our city attorney.
If you all vote that you want to make some kind of recommendation or proclamation to the city council, you are entitled to do that.
Okay, I'll enjoin with you. That's one.
Can we do that today, or do we have to agendize it for another meeting? Okay, well, let's agendize it then.
That's what we're doing.
My motion then is to agendize it for our January 18th.
Motion, no, we don't.
Oh, we know. Oh, okay. There we go. Uh, let's see. We, I, this was touched on briefly. Are we, do we have a plan as to how we're going to attack the fee issue, readdressing this? Is that, is that going to be on our agenda in January?
Well, I think that since we're going to do a presentation.
On what the other cities are doing?
With the city council and kind of. Well, I'll check with the city manager's office and that, if we do, when they do the presentation, we can, you know.
Yeah, seems like given the new city manager, he's got a lot on his plate that, that initiative may go out the window.
I would, if I may, I would plan on doing a presentation. We've had most of the commissions done already. It just wouldn't be fair if you didn't get your chance to showcase your commission. So, we'll look into that, but still plan on having it there. As far as the fees, we're in the process of a comprehensive fee study that's being led by Public Works. And I can tell you back when we did the last one, 2009, the city's position was 100% fee recovery. Total fee recovery. So, now if they want to shift and base your input to have it where the city subsidizes part of the work, that's something that you can discuss with council and, and we'll go through a little further in the process.
All right, I, I have no further comments.
Commissioner Rush?
Just want to thank staff for the hard work and the fine presentations today and the workshop presentation also. Want to thank and welcome Pedro. Welcome to the group. You're going to enjoy this. I don't think there's a lot of homes in Yorba Linda that are on a historical registry, are there? Yeah, but, but it's, yeah, so you're going to love this because we've got a lot of resources around here. And again, just want to wish everybody happy holidays. And I'm hoping Janelle will say a word or two about the fire station and the state it's in. Thank you.
Commissioner Schaefer?
A lot of my comments have been already stated, but I would like to say in advance, I cannot be here on the 18th. I have a board meeting for the California Association of Realtors on that day, and it's not local. So, I have to go do a little bit of travel for that. So, I would encourage us to do it the week before, the week after. I'm available. But on the 18th, I'm tied up, unfortunately. I'd like to welcome Pedro also. We need help here, so glad to see you. We talked about 2525 North Main. We talked about, or you're going to bring up, I think, the fire station. So, I'll defer to you on that. And just want to say happy holidays from Thanksgiving through Christmas to everybody and look forward to working with you all again next year. Thank you.
Commissioner Hardy?
Hello, I just want to thank staff and welcome Pedro. And I do have some questions. I don't know how we're going to work this, but that's part of the problem. As I believe Park and Rec is moving, going to move forward on their adaptive reuse of the interior, the interior, I'm not hearing from them that they're aware that maybe as a key structure that they're going to need to rehab, to do a rehabilitation of the exterior per Secretary of Interior Standards. So I think if that is the case, that somehow, everybody involved needs to be brought up to speed, so it's not a rude awakening to anybody, anywhere, at a bad time, that they start out the gate with that kind of thing. It's been secured a couple times, I think, since our last meeting, broken into, secured again. There is a perimeter fence that had a tarp, so you couldn't really see what was going on, and I was told that was going to be removed off the perimeter fence. I've only seen what's going on in the front, I haven't been observing the back. But last time I went by the property, that tarp was still on the temporary type of perimeter fence, but I haven't been by there for a few days. The other thing is I'm getting some interest in the community about the Little White Beauty Shop at that kind of new traffic type circle, is it 300 North Bush at Third, I think? Folks are asking if that's a historical structure, or if there's information somewhere about it, and they're wanting to know if they need to start at ground zero and go to the history room and see, you know, so I'm, I don't know if staff has any information on that, if it's worth even looking at. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardy, we'd be happy to follow up on those two items. I know staff is working as part of a committee with Parks and Rec on the first item pertaining to the firehouse, and so Melanie has an update, I believe she'll, she might be able to follow up with you on that. Maybe you could do it now, Mel?
Thank you. So we have informed Parks and Rec that, you know, if there's any exterior modifications, it needs to meet the, get a certificate of appropriateness to meet Secretary of Interior Standards. And Ron Enoz, we're going to be working hopefully early next week, because whatever bars and such securing things, that as well, we want to make sure that that's historically appropriate, et cetera. So we're, we've made that connection with them, and we'll be working with them.
Thank you.
And on your second item, we'd be happy to research the small little beauty salon, the White House, I believe it's called, adjacent to that traffic calming measure called the chicane is the official name of those little roundabout deals.
Okay, thank you very much.
I just wanted to see if we can get more information at our next meeting on the Edgewood and North Street, North Main Street project that Commissioner Rush is asking about, and some background. I haven't read anything, I haven't done any research, but I would love to know what the city has, is doing. It sounds like a scary project, so, yeah.
If I may, I can give you an update on that one now, because I'm pretty closely involved with it.
Okay.
So it's currently a two-story office building, it's been vacant for some time. The O'Gonigs, the developer's been your development, who's doing the heritage project, plus a couple of other ones in the city, the Madison over there on Cabrio Park Drive, and the Met down on Main and McArthur's, they've been in the city for several years. They proposed a 517-unit, five-story apartment project there, all marketed rate housing. They want to park it at 1.72 spaces per unit, and so they turned in an application two weeks ago, and we just started our initial review on it. There's going to be a neighborhood meeting, it's called a Sunshine Ordinance Meeting, but the Sunshine Ordinance that the council passed several years ago, next Wednesday at six o'clock at the Discovery Science Cube. We're expecting an overflow crowd there, they can fit about 130, 140 in that room, and there could be more than that there. But that's kind of their, essentially their project, it's five stories, it's going to be a wrap project, so there's going to be an eight-level parking structure, that'll be wrapped by 517 units, it'll be five stories, so it'll be about the same height, the parking structure and the five stories will be about the same height. But that'll be right up there against a single-family residential neighborhood just to the east of Park Santiago. And believe me, the neighbors are engaged, they're over-engaged. I've seen many, many emails personally that come to me, and so the developers are aware that it's going to be a difficult process for them. It needs an environmental impact report, so we're looking probably eight to 12 months before it gets to the planning commission and city council. They're hoping to get it done by next July or August, it's going to be tough, but so over the next several months, we'll be doing a lot of analysis, both, you know, the project review plus the sequel analysis. That's kind of it in a nutshell.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. And other than that, I just want to say happy holidays to everybody, and it's been wonderful serving with you this year on this commission, and thank you, staff.
Okay, I'm going to say the whole thing. Happy Thanksgiving. I say Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year, and Happy Hanukkah, not leaving anybody out. And Kwanzaa, okay. Of all things, right? And so forth, and once again, it's been a pleasure working with each and every one of you this year, and of course, with the staff, you know, thank you once again for giving us a successful year, then on that. And with that, this meeting is now adjourned to Thursday, January 18, 2018.
Madam Chair, there was a request to modify, move the date, if you want to consider that right now. I think legally purposes helps us out a little bit when we notice the meeting next time, so.
Okay.
We're open, you're open either way, 11th through the 25th, we're, we'll work with you.
Would I do that by a motion?
Yeah.
As a request? I'd like to request that we postpone the meeting by one week, that'd be better for staff, right?
Before, up, or down?
To go to the later date, hold on, that's what's after...
So the normal, the regular date's the fourth, we requested the 18th to give us a little time after the holidays, but we can do it the 11th, which is the one week after the normal meeting, or we can do it 25th.
11th or 25th is fine with me, so what would staff, does staff have a preference?
25th is...
25th?
I'd like to request that we have the next meeting on January 25th, if possible.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Schaefer, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second one. Commissioner Hardy, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed seventh with one absence of Commissioner Wim. Meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you all very much.
We want a full report. Vince, can I see you for a second?
It did, yeah, 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 yeah. But I'll copy someone, bring them in.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so that will be our HRC meeting, it'll be on the 25th, I'm putting it in my calendar right now. Oh, beautiful.
And we usually go late anyway in January.
Sure.